The faster we get in, the faster we get out. The faster we get in, the faster we get out. First in line, first in time. If the glove don't fit, you must be quit.
It is now six thirty-one. I'm going to bring this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Cuevas to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by a word of inspiration by Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavery Chapel, South Bay.
Please stand, right hand over your heart. Ready? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now six thirty-one. I'm going to bring this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Cuevas to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by a word of inspiration by Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavery Chapel, South Bay.
Please stand, right hand over your heart. Ready? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, as I was preparing to come over here, I always try to think about the city of Landale, what I would have to say. And as I considered who you are, I want to read this to you. This is out of the book of Matthew. And you are the light of the world. A city that is on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do they hide their lamp or put it under a basket, but on a lampstand, and it gives light to all who are in the house. Let your light so shine before men, that they may be, see your good words and glorify your father. And that's the city. You don't hide your light. You minister to the occupants of the city, the residences. And they see your light shine as you come together as a council and you minister to their needs. You hear the things that are going on in the city, and you're not bashful. You try to help them. And that's the light that shines. And Mayor Miles, you are awesome. I love you. And you're like home here. I come and just, dear lady, she's always saying wonderful things and saying hi to me. I love that. But can I move in? I love you. Father, I thank you for this city and, Lord, just for all that you're doing, the light that shines. And I pray, Father, that they continue to be that light, that example in the city. Father, that those that are here would feel blessed, ministered to, and know that their concerns are heard. Father, I pray for this council, that you give them great wisdom and lead them, direct them. Father, show them what it is your will, and, Lord, that you would help them to make wise decisions for this city. I thank you for them, for their light that shines. I thank you for those men and women in law enforcement, those that show up every day, even with the adversities of the things that are taking place. These men and women in law enforcement are so awesome, keeping us safe, watching over us, and ministering to us as we have needs. Father, also the local fire departments and all that serve this city. We thank you for their hearts. We thank you for choosing them to be who they are, especially these on the board, this council. Father, bless their lives and their families and everything they do. We thank you and praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for being here tonight. Thank you for those kind words, words of inspiration. Let's move our agenda. Let's hear from our public safety report. Let's hear from our LA County Sheriff's Department. Let's hear from our sergeant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for September eighteenth through October first. I'll bring up first a significant incident that occurred on September twenty-eighth. Deputies responded to Jane Adams Middle School in the city of Landale regarding reports of a student with a firearm. The incident prompted a large law enforcement response. During the investigation, the firearm was located and determined to be a BB gun. No injuries were reported. Some notable investigations. Deputy David Alvarado conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle for vehicle code violations near the intersection of Redondo Beach Boulevard and Prairie Avenue. During his investigation, he arrested the driver for an outstanding arrest warrant. And during a subsequent search of the vehicle, he found an unregistered firearm. Deputy Alvarado learned that the driver was prohibited by state law from owning or possessing a firearm. And the driver was booked, arrested for that as well, and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Motorcycle enforcement deputy Christian Morales stopped a vehicle for vehicle code violations. During his investigation, he learned the driver was in possession of multiple forged documents. The driver was arrested for identity theft. Deputy Henry Lopez and Letitia Fazini responded to the forty-three hundred block of one hundred and sixty-sixth Street regarding a suspicious circumstances call for service. The call stated the driver was making smoke from the tires of their vehicle. Upon their arrival, they learned a traffic collision had occurred. And upon further investigation, he determined that the driver was under the influence of alcohol, and he arrested him for driving under the influence. He was booked at South Los Angeles Station. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, on October eighteenth, coming up at about nine, nine a.m., we're going to be having coffee with a cop at the Target on, near the intersection of Hawthorne and Rosecrans, that's in the city of Landale. It's October eighteenth, about nine, so if everybody can make it out, the community would be great, we'll be there. Deputies will be there, and I hope it's a fun event. And this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the sergeant's report? All right. Thank you, Sergeant, for the report. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's hear from LA County Fire Department Battalion Chief Ramon Fadaria.
This evening, Brian King.
Oh, Brian King, yeah. They did give me Brian King's name, right. And I did switch it over, Brian King.
That's right.
Battalion Chief. There you go. I'm glad you know who you are.
Members of the council, so our run stats for the month of September was a busy month. We had two hundred and twenty-seven total calls, a hundred and seventy-three of which were medically related. We had one structured fire response at one forty-four eighteen Hawthorne Boulevard, which is the number-one buffet restaurant, which was mitigated rapidly with minimal damage. Advanced practitioner Unit Twenty, or AP Twenty, had seven responses in the month of September, which is a good one, call for volume for that particular unit, five of which were okay to books. And then just today, they had AP Twenty responded to two incidents within the city of Landale. So it's providing good services to your residents.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of Platoon Chief Brian King?
No, but I do have a comment. Thank you for adding that into your report. I'm really excited about that service. I think that that will have something to do further down the line of keeping some of the impact out of our emergency rooms, especially right now when we're dealing with COVID and COVID being on the rise and those numbers. It just keeps everybody safe.
Yes, having a significant impact, for sure.
Absolutely. So thank you, thank you, thank you for those calls.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Chief.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you can approach the podium, if you can give us your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on that'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. At three minutes, you may hear the city clerk tell you that your time has expired. So let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir.
Hey, everyone. Josh Standifer, resident at four six two seven West One Seventy-Third Street. Nice to see you. I've seen some of you more recently, because, as you know, we discovered a grave marker in my backyard. And I was just bringing it to the council, because this is what everyone who's been fighting the metro actively has been thinking, is that we possibly, we can give it over to the metro and let them do whatever they're going to do. They also, at that point, control the evidence that they find. They can give us what they want and what they don't want. And at that point, they can either say yea or nay, green light or red light, for this project that I know most people here don't want to go down our row. On behalf of all the neighbors and the residents along the row, I'd like to ask if possibly the council could discuss amongst themselves the possibility of gathering. We can take donations amongst ourselves, but finding a way to get LiDAR or someone to just roll that thing over where they can see what's under the ground, we're already in contact with some companies, to see if possibly we could have Landale own if we find whether or not there are bodies there. And that's what I, instead of metro running the whole thing, running op, I wondered if the city could find the ability to help assist us run op for ourselves, to see if we can find bodies there, then that might be the linchpin we need or the bulwark we need to stop the row from being taken seriously. So...
It's called LiDAR?
Thank you.
Yeah, LiDAR, ground penetrating radar. It's non-evasive. That's how they find out. They can go way down and they just roll something over it, and they get a topographical or a three-dimensional layout of what's there, and they can clearly see if there are receptacles.
Exactly. Yeah, that's easy.
Thank you.
Oh, technology. They can do that.
Good evening, Deana, Landale resident. Just want to state again, more coyote sightings in my block, and I never got a phone call from someone stating, to talk about the location again. I don't know who's recording our coyote sightings or if they want to know the coyote sightings, so please give me a call. They're out there nightly in my block for some reason. I don't know if they're renting or going to buy. But also, somebody had mentioned that a cat was killed by a speeding driver on one forty-seventh, I guess it's afternoon. It's very unfortunate that, of course, again, it's a speeding thing, so I just wanted to say something about the speeding. And I know we have a new motor officer, but it is ridiculous, and you do hear all the revving and all the noise at night, too. The car's racing on all sorts of streets anymore. It's very frustrating. So I'm very sorry for that family's loss, that they lost their cat. It's very unfortunate. So that's it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Randall Abram. I have come before council many times, but what initially brought me here was fireworks and the threat, the fire that was posed to my house and property. Primarily, my concern was that the mortars directed in my direction would ignite the two-story palms on the adjacent property and spread to the houses. Palm trees, as evidenced by the current suit against the city for damage to a resident's vehicle by falling fronds, is another problem. Not only is there a possibility of injury from the falling fronds, but improper maintenance causes the death of unqualified trimmers through falls, chainsaw injuries, and suffocation. I provided you a separate sheet of information regarding these dangers. The state of California requires that any tree trimming above fifteen feet requiring physical climbing is to be performed by a licensed landscaper with workers comp. Last year, I requested that the city of Landale implement the stated measures to ensure that if and when homeowners decided to maintain the fifty-foot palms in their yards, no deaths or injuries would occur. Coachella has an ordinance which requires property owners to trim all dead fronds from their trees on an annual basis. While Landale requires a license, contract, and permit for turf insulation, but does not require one for the trimming and climbing of these dangerous palms. That needs to change to preserve life. Perhaps Landale might want to consider banning any fast-growing palms due to the likelihood that they will not be maintained and present a hazard when the dead fronds fall. All over the city, you see palms encased by dead fronds that have never been skinned unless the storm or severe winds blow the fronds from the trees. Additionally, the falling days litter our sidewalks posing a slip hazard. In my complex, one of the canary palms causing a fire concern was removed by the owner using an unlicensed contractor. During removal, a cut section dropped, broke through the fence, and landed on the sidewalk. Had this portion of truck fallen on one of the workers beneath the tree or on a pedestrian, would have been an avoidable tragedy. The same owner attempted another illegal palm removal when the diseased crown became a danger. At this time, it was discovered that the city did not require a permit and does not follow the state's measures to protect workers. The unlicensed tree trimmer climbed to the top, cut off the crown, and let the tree rot on the property. Pictures of the unlicensed tree trimmer and the now-dead palm fronds are provided to you. And I just gave Ms. Hoffman more pictures of a tree trimmer who was fifty feet up, thirty-nine years old, and died. And the efforts the fire department had to get to get him out are horrendous. While the city has the resources to maintain any palms they plant, it is evident around the city that this is not the case for owners, and this poses a danger that needs to be addressed. Dents can be removed from the vehicles, but you can't bring back a life. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor. Is it one for everyone or just read it and pass it down?
Mayor Miles, excuse me, community and council members. My name is Monica Padilla, and I stand here before you again today to address some pressing concerns with the more direct communication. As we cannot engage in a rebuttal once our voice, once we voice our concerns, I hope that this time my words can make a meaningful impact in the issue of the illegal fireworks in our community. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that, like many others in the community, I am also opposed to illegal fireworks. They create significant danger and tragically led to the loss of innocent lives in countless centuries. I appreciate the efforts of our city council and the law enforcement in addressing these issues. However, I'm here to request the reform, accountability, and transparency in our approach to this problem. During our last meeting, some council members expressed reluctance to fully enforce existing protocols and laws against the use of illegal fireworks. I was informed by Mr. Reyes, and also by the sheriff, and I apologize, I don't know his name, of concerns for the safety of the deputies when confronting those engaging in this misconduct. I understand and respect the daily challenges our law enforcement officers face. As a spouse of a U.S. Army veteran who took an oath to defend the Constitution, I know the dedication expected from every deputy who pledges to protect and to serve our community. Their oath is not conditional, and therefore, it is not acceptable for fear to be used as an excuse to avoid enforcing the law on the Fourth of July or any other day. If the council is responsible for creating rules, mandates, and laws and expects our citizens to obey by them, we must lead by example. It is crucial that we hold ourselves to the same standards that we expect our community members. I am not here to assign blame, but to urge you to consider importance of enforcing the law consistently and fairly. One specific concern, once again, I need to address, is the property owner's liability. It seems that the council is holding the property owners accountable for the actions of their tenants by imposing fines. While I understand the need to address these issues comprehensively, I believe that we should explore alternative solutions that we both, that they will both be effective and fair. The goal is to deter from illegal fireworks. And imposing excessive fines on property owners does not address the root of the issue or the problem. A property owner should not be liable for a citation of illegal fireworks if they themselves did not partake in the act. A property owner, or any human for that matter, cannot control actions of another individual. It is unfair to cite someone for the actions of others.
Go ahead and wrap it up for me, ma'am.
Thank you. I must enforce direct information, the misinformation presented regarding the fines associated with illegal fireworks. Claims were made by, that citations are to be treated just like a parking ticket, and that the fines have always been paid before the citations are contested. These are not citations that are sixty-five dollars.
Okay, go ahead and wrap it up for me. Your time has expired. I'm sorry.
So I want to reiterate my commitment to the safety and wellbeing of our community. My purpose here today is not to advocate for the use of illegal fireworks, but to request reform, accountability, and transparency.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Landale. I promise to be brief for once. Two weeks ago, I saw some of you at Metro Headquarters downtown. Thank you for attending and advocating for free, for fair, and just treatment for Landale. Last week, six of us from Landale went downtown to speak at the Metro Board of Directors meeting. There's been a lot of press regarding the Green Line extension and Landale lately. I would appreciate, I would appreciate hearing any updates beyond those articles and beyond Mr. Standifer's very recent report. Thank you again.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Norman Masson. I live on Larch Avenue. And there's, there's no line down the center of the street, so when cars are driving down, it's sort of, it's, it's, you just, sometimes you feel like you're going to not be, you have your side mirror knocked off. Then I noticed that Freeman, the street over, has lines down the center. So I called up Public Works, and I said, hey, can we get lines down the center of Larch Avenue? Because it's, it's an issue. So a guy says, sure, I'll call you back. I'll find out. So I'm, okay, he's going to call me back. So days go by, and I don't get a call back. And at some point, I realize, hey, he hasn't called me back. So I call them again. Somebody else sends us the phone, and I say, hey, we need lines down Larch Avenue, just like there is on Freeman. He says, oh, okay, I'll call you back. So days go by, and a couple of weeks go by, and at some point, I'm not getting a call back. So I call again, but this time, I'm smarter, and I take down the person's name and the date. So June twenty-sixth, I speak to Violet. And Violet says, oh, we're going to put in a work order. So I'm thinking, this is great. We're making progress. So a week goes by, two weeks, I'm waiting for, you know, the work to start. Well, two months go by, there's no work. So I go, okay, well, let me call back. So I call back, and on August twenty-ninth, and Violet picks up the phone and says, hey, Violet, I spoke to you about this work order. Well, she has no idea what I'm talking about. So she doesn't even understand what I'm talking about, lines down the center of the street. She says, okay, the engineer, Rick, will call you back. So that was August twenty-ninth. I'm still waiting for Rick's phone call. Come on, guys. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, with that, we will close public comments. Okay, let's hear from the council, see if there's any comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
All right, before I start, I have something that I would like to speak about as a resident here in the Landale. And as a resident, I attended the Metro meeting down in Los Angeles. May I say a word or two?
Sure. Let me, let me clarify this for the audience here, for any audience members watching at home and for the council. Councilmember Hoffman Gorman is conflicted out of participating in Metro matters, and she has done a very good job of recusing herself from those matters. Rather than having her step down, speak, and step back up, which can get confusing, you may speak on Metro in your private capacity, not your governmental capacity. I would ask the clerk, we don't need to start the light, but if you could do a three-minute timer so that she gets no more right to speak than any other member of the public, and then when that three minutes is over, she will return to her governmental capacity and give any other comments you have. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I also attended the meeting down in Metro on, I believe it was the twentieth of the month on Wednesday. I did not make it to the Thursday meeting, but I did on the, on the Wednesday meeting. And I just wanted to say thank you to our attorney, Lana, and to our city manager, Sean Moore, and also to the council member sitting to my right, Bernadette Suarez, for taking the time out of their day to also come. I also want to thank Mr. Haller for being there, and to the many phone calls, including Dr. Osborne, for calling in. Those phone calls, I appreciated every single one of them. For those of you that don't know here on the council, again, Metro got up and spoke on that day on Wednesday, and once again, told numbers that were not correct numbers, that we all have told them for thirty years are incorrect, and they're not doing anything about changing it. So listening to them present to the Metro Board again incorrect information, and for Landale's standing for thirty years, and Metro saying to us, how do we get Landale to trust you? And my stance keeps being, give us answers. Communicate with us. For thirty years, we have met, and we've given you our concerns and our questions, but we, they have been met with no answers. So I get up to the podium, and my presentation to them was, I would like to see answers to the questions that were submitted on the draft EIR. I think that that should be made public. Landale has asked over and over and over again for answers, and if they, if they're afraid, whatever the problem is, that they can't provide us those answers to our many questions, then doggone it, let us see that draft EIR and see what those responses were and what those concerns were. Because I'm right there with Dr. Osborne. It's seventy feet across, not a hundred feet across on the row, and they've got to start listening, instead of still sitting there looking at the board and saying it's a hundred feet across. We've told them for years, it's seventy feet across. So that's what I would like the rest of the council to hear. As a resident, I would appreciate help with getting and encouraging Metro to let us see the responses to that draft EIR. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. That was great, well within the three minutes. I should also state for the record, Ms. Hoffman Gorman, not speaking as council member, did thank Lana Layman, who is special counsel, because also for the good of the public, and a reminder, my firm and myself are also conflicted out. So you will not see me comment on Metro items, because I can't advise the city on them either. So we want to be sure that we're doing this right, and council member, thank you so much for bringing that up. And now we can return to council responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that came out to speak tonight. I don't really have a lot to say, other than, Liam, is there a possibility that you could meet with that gentleman and speak to him directly? Sir, your issue on Larch, I would like for you to speak to the director, because then we could get some questions answered. All right. And to everybody else, thank you for coming out. Deana, I don't know what to tell you about coyotes. They break my heart. So all I can say is if you own a cat or a small animal, bring them in. Try not to, I know that I have little Chihuahuas, and I find myself outside in the yard with them because I'm scared that the coyotes are going to be near. Randall, thank you, as always, for your concerns on fireworks. And I'm sitting here with this, and I'll look at it in just a few minutes. All right? That's all I have tonight, and I'll pass it to the guy on my right.
Thank you. Councilmember Peck Kearney.
I also want to thank everybody that came up to speak tonight, and this is for Deana. Maybe you can talk to Sergeant Smith about the speeding, and we get to put the biker over there. And I wanted to cover everything else, Larch. I'm a little confused. I know he spoke about lines, but is it on the, well, maybe we can find out, the north side of Larch or the, the south side? I don't know, the south side is not wide enough. It must be the, the north side of Marine and Larch. Anyway, I'll pass it on to the lady next to you.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out. I would defer, with regards to Josh and the graveyards, I would defer to probably our special counsel and city manager for that. I have no idea how that works out, you know, what we can and can't do. So I'll leave it to them, maybe to brief us on that if appropriately, and then, then we can ask questions and see. And then, thank you, Randall, for the report. I'll take a look at this and read through the information. And then with regards to the fireworks, I don't know, I know the last meeting we spoke about, the mayor brought up... about, the mayor brought up the upfront fee that needs to be paid, and I think we were waiting on some more information on that, so I don't know if we have an update on that or not.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor and council, so on the, for the fireworks, we're still working through the appeals, so we don't have any updates on that. With regards to the graves, staff's recommendation, it's not in the city's right-of-way jurisdiction. Staff looked at it generally, we're not surveyors, it's on Metro's right-of-way. So I've explained this to the media, portions of those backyards along, you know, are encroaching in the Metro's right-of-way, it is in Metro's right-of-way. So we're gonna wait to see what they do, there's state law, there's other requirements, they hire special consultants to go in there and look at it, and then once we get the report, we can look at it and then make appropriate recommendations out of mitigate and look into it further if necessary, including the LiDAR, as mentioned by the property owners that are affected by this situation. So for right now, it'd be premature to do anything until we see what Metro comes up with, and they submit something over to us and we review it and, and take a look at it. And I just add one other thing, you don't, when it comes to CEQA too, just for, we're not gonna see the final comments until the final EIR is completed. Metro's made it clear, they do not plan on putting that out until after the preferred locally alternative is approved by the Metro Board, and then they were gonna come back months later and adopt the final EIR, and that's when we'll get copies of all the comments submitted on the draft.
Yeah. That's it.
And then, one last comment, thank you, Ray, for your comments. I did wanna let this board know that I sit on the South Bay Cities Council of Government, and they are planning to have the Board of Directors do a walkthrough. I asked to see the route beforehand so I could show it to staff, and I'm probably gonna bring you along with me, Sean, so, so that you can, you know, observe if there's any comments that any of the other members have, because they may take a position on a preferred route as early as next month possibly, or, yeah, next month, November, so just to keep that on the radar, I'll let you know. And with that, just one again, thanks, everybody that came out tonight.
Okay, Madam Pro Tim, Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Michael, who does Deana have to talk to so we could take account of how many coyotes we have or sightings we have?
She, she can talk to me, and I did call Deana.
All right.
I left a message, but I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting. Okay, I have the information too, Quavis. So, yeah, Deana can talk to me and, and contact. And we do track all the cases.
Yeah, if we could track them, and maybe next meeting, you could tell us how many sightings have been reported, 'cause I did see, our website and Facebook has the warning, but it doesn't say where to report the, the cases. So I don't know if there's a number that we could put on there, maybe for a voicemail or a email address where that could be reported.
Okay, I'll, I'll correct that, and we'll get our number on there so they can leave a message at MSD.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the palm trees, I have seen palm trees that are half-dead, so how does the city handle it? If it's, do we have a requirement?
Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought this up, Mayor and council. These palm trees are on private property, they are not on city property. If the council wants to look at adopting an ordinance and regulating palm trees, then we would have to hire a palm tree expert to come out and review them like we do on ours, which you guys have seen the reports, they can get pretty costly and expensive. So if the council wants to look at regulating palm trees in people's front yards, we can certainly bring something forward and look at that, but on palm trees, you need experts. And then, as you notice, some of them are really tall, they're diseased, they have little issues with them. But when it comes to just basic property maintenance, staff can, they can contact MSD staff, and they can go out there and say, you need to cut them if there's dead fronds popping down. But in determining the, their death, if they're dying or diseased, we would have to hire outside consultant, an expert in palm trees like we have to do on ours. And so, and look at those, and then get up there and to the tops of the crowns and investigate what the issues are, if that's the, the goal of the council, wanting to do some kind of ordinance like that and, and look into that. Right now, it's a private property issue. If there are fronds falling down, it's on the, I'm not an attorney, but I'll leave that to Greg to address, but when it comes off the property and it's not maintained, it's on the property owner, unless they're on our public right-of-way.
So if it hits, if something falls and it hits a resident on the sidewalk, they're not gonna go after the city? They'll go after the property owner?
Well, I'll defer that to Greg, I'll defer that to Greg.
But, in, in that circumstance, and again, we're not talking about city trees, we're talking about private property trees. Anybody can sue anybody at any time for any reason, so could they come after the city? Sure. Would your insurance authority attorneys be successful in disposing of the claim against the city quickly? Yes, they would.
Okay. We don't wanna ruin our lady over there, her record for, you know, insurance. The other thing is, how do we know that if the Metro does whatever survey, they're gonna tell us the true finding? Because apparently Metro knew about the grave sites, they were the supposed grave sites, and they hid it. So how do we know that they're not gonna hide things or findings on there?
Well, we will definitely, like I mentioned to the mayor and council, we'll definitely look at first what their archaeological report or special report they put together, and then at that point, we'll, we'll review that and see if it's deficient, if it meets state standards or standards for, we can look up whatever the standards are, I'm not an expert in this, but we definitely could consult with other agencies that run into this issue, other, other cities that have had issues relating to potential burial grounds. I imagine it's similar to cultural, when you find Native American cultural sensitive sites, it's similar to that, you have to cone it off, you have to mitigate, and you have to document and identify. So I don't, without knowing, I'm not an expert in this area, but we would definitely review anything they, they submit over to the city and then look at it closely. One thing, again, is that it's in their right-of-way, so they kinda, they're the lead agency, so we have to defer to them for now until we get a report back from them and they provide that. Then I can bring that to the council, the finally decide if there's an issue, and we can discuss it then and put an item on the agenda for the council to consider.
Okay, thank you. That will be all, thank you.
Good. Okay, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight as well, and those who spoke tonight. Piggybacking on the, the Metro issue, Josh, thank you for being here tonight. I, I did see the markers, I, you wasn't there when I was at Jay's house, but I did see the, see the markers. Until you actually see the markers, you appreciate it, the, the issue a little more, a little better, a little clearer, when you actually see the markers, because in this case, we're talking about, you know, if it's determined that there's actually a burial ground, possibly disturbing, you know, the dead. And I'm, you know, I've always been, you know, against, you know, disturbing burial sites or what have you, whether, however they got there or whatever, is, is a whole different story or what have you, if they are in fact a burial site, but to disturb a burial site, to me, that's, that's something that should not happen. Obviously, there is state agencies that regulate burials, and so, of course, we'll be in, in consultation with them, there's a coroner's office as well, and so we don't necessarily, we won't have to rely on Metro's to make determination, because there's state agencies that's responsible for, responsible for such. And I would imagine that these state agencies will do their, do diligence and issue their reports or what have you, that we can rely on, on those reports from those state agencies as opposed to councils themselves. Randall, thank you for bringing up the, the tree trimming, and particularly on the palms, trees. I did take your, your point about the palm trees being on private property, Mr. City Manager, but my question is, can we have a system whereby, it seemed like to me, with, with these, with the height of these palm trees and how dangerous they are, what have you, palm trees fall, or what have, not the, the tree itself, the fongs, is that how you say it, falls, that maybe the city need to have some type of notification when you're gonna cut palm trees? Because if you, if you're dealing with, with tree trimmers that's unlicensed, how do we know that they are, I mean, we, in the city, and I just begun to appreciate this issue, because in, in the city of LA, we do a lot of tree trimming, right? And some of the tree trimmers, in, in our office, we do directly, but there's some trees that we can't touch because of the nature of the trees, you know, and the dangers associated with, and palm trees are one of them, right? Because of the height or what have you. And so I would be concerned as whether, whether or not we can have some type of system where you have to notice, notice the, the city if you're gonna cut a palm tree, what have you. I'm not necessarily saying a license, you know, a permit, but some type of notification, 'cause I would like to know that, that the folks who are cutting these trees, trimming these trees are licensed, and they know what they're doing, and you're not just finding someone that's, you know, do this on the weekend, what have you, because it is a pretty dangerous situation. So that's what I have to say about that, and so if you can look into that, I appreciate Ms. Monica Padilla, you, you mentioned, once again, about the, applying the fireworks, illegal fireworks fair and equally, and of course, that, that is exactly what we should be doing, applying fair. And your issue, your question is that the, the homeowner shouldn't be, you know, responsible. That's, of course, is, if it's found that they are not liable and they're not responsible, I totally agree as well. My issue is rolling back or reducing the bail so that property owners could have some relief when they go before the, well, the appeals board, I'm gonna call it, the hearing officer, to determine whether or not the, the homeowner should be held responsible or not. In some cases, it's for, the hearing officer have to make that determination unfortunately, because if there's illegal fireworks on your, your property, who knows if the, if the property owner is responsible? Who knows who's responsible? That's what the hearing officer is for. My only issue is that it shouldn't, it shouldn't, you know, be a, a punishment to get in front of the hearing officer. So the bail should not serve as such, so the bail should be reasonable. And so that's what I'm looking for us to do, if, if possible, is to reduce the bail so that homeowners can get in front of the hearing officers, so they can make a determination as to who is responsible, or whether or not, I should say, the, the property owner is responsible. They may not be able to determine who is responsible, but the hope is to find out who, whether the property owner is responsible for the illegal fireworks. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And Ray, thank you, where did Ray go? Ray, thank you for being at the Metro meeting and staying diligently on this issue. It's the same, like I said, song and dance that we've received from, you know, from Metro, but we gotta just, as you know, continue to stay, stay on, and I really appreciate your, your efforts and you being there, as well as some of the other residents that was there as well. And with that, we already discussed the, the Larch issue with the dividing line, so we'll take a look at that. And that's all I have. And with that, we'll close public comments and comments by the, by the council, and we will move our agenda to the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar, item one through four?
I'll motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Quavis that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? CNN, the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is item five concerning potential rescheduling or cancellation of upcoming council meetings. Most of these meetings seem pretty routine, as we do every year, but let's have the staff report. Who wants to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am?
That would be me. Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. The item before you is to request council's consideration of potentially counseling one meeting and also, excuse me, potentially rescheduling one meeting and canceling three upcoming meetings. Staff is requesting council consider counseling the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three council meeting, because that is being held during the week of Thanksgiving. Staff is also requesting that city council cancel the meeting of January first, twenty twenty-four, and January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, because those two meetings land on official city council holidays. Also, staff is requesting that city council reschedule a meeting to Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in order to handle city business during the month of January. And lastly, staff is requesting that city council cancel the meeting of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, due to a city holiday as well, or provide staff with further direction. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Just a point of clarification, give that to me again on the reschedule, reschedule a city council meeting to Tuesday, January sixteenth.
Yes.
Reschedule it from where?
So for the month of January, there are actually two holidays which land on both city council meetings, January first, New Year's Day, and January fifteenth, which is Dr. Martin Luther King holiday. So technically, if you cancel those meetings, there will not, there will not be a city council meeting in January, which is your option.
Oh, I get it, okay. That makes sense.
I have a call now.
Yes, ma'am. I gotta scratch my bag.
I, for one, think that we've already canceled enough city council meetings in the summer, and I would be absolutely for us still meeting on Monday, November twentieth, and January second, we can meet, January sixteenth, we can meet, and on February twentieth, we can meet. I think that we owe it to the citizens to be available for these meetings. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Well, for me, I think it kind of relieves staff, it gives some of them a chance to kind of enjoy the holidays as well, I think, and it's completely up to them too, if they're able to keep the items concise on those days and think we can make it through, then I don't have an issue. We've historically have canceled these, just to give people somewhat of a relief and always have the option, if there is important city business to attend to, that we can reschedule it with a special meeting if necessary. So.
That's true.
I, I guess I would leave it up to staff, if there, if there are any pressing items that they're anticipating.
Yeah, that's true. I would, no, go ahead.
I would keep the November twentieth meeting, it's four days before Thanksgiving, has nothing to do with the holidays, the holiday is on Thursday, the meeting's on Monday. The rest of the ones I'm okay with, to reschedule?
Yeah, I feel the same about the Monday, November the twentieth as well, in the circle, and we keep, keep that one. The, the rest of them, I can go with staff recommendation. What do you think?
I'm okay if we keep the twentieth and the rest of the calendar is fine, as long as if there's something that needs to be discussed, we call a special meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, it sounds like we have a consensus to, to adopt the recommendations, with the exception of Monday, November the twentieth, by keeping Monday, November the twentieth as a meeting. Is that the, is that a consensus? Some of you have consensus on that. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, can I adopt this by a consensus, or do we need a vote on it?
Consensus is just fine, sir. Thank you.
Okay, without any objection, we, with that, with consensus, we will adopt that. Okay, let's go on to item six, request for additional funding for increase, additional funding to increase the contract with SPCA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is regarding a request to get additional funding for our contract with SPCA. We've been partnering with the SPCA for more than two decades, it's been a beneficial partnership for both ourselves and for their agency. They did let us know at the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year that they were gonna be increasing fees substantially to approximately ninety-six hundred dollars a month. I came before you a year ago and let you know that I had negotiated a deal for twelve months to keep us at an eighty-one hundred dollar a month rate, that now that the fiscal year is over and we begin twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, the amount they're gonna charge us is ninety-seven, or ninety-seven hundred and twenty dollars a month. While this does represent a substantial increase, staff feels SPCA is still the best deal for the city and for our residents. There are only a handful of agencies that do kenneling services and hospitalization and things like that for, for our pets and animals. SPCA, because of their proximity and because they gave us total twenty-four access, twenty-four hour access into their facilities, our officers can go in there without having to make contact with their staff, we can drop off our dead animals, and we can be in and out in less than ten minutes. Some of the other agencies that we could possibly partner with did give slightly cheaper Um, some of the other agencies that we could possibly partner with did give slightly cheaper, um, rates, but, um, that rate is quickly lost when you consider that officers would have to be out of town for, out of the city of Longdale for possibly two to three hours for every animal call that we handle, um, versus going to Hawthorne where you can get it done in less than a half hour. So for these reasons, we do feel that SPCA is still the best offer. Um, we are asking, uh, there is an error. I do apologize on the staff report. The amount we're asking for is actually, um, fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Um, the original staff report I submitted, and I didn't realize we had only, um, put in for a nine-month estimation, not a ten-month estimation. So, um, the correct amount is fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty additional dollars for the year. And I'm free to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? So if we went to the county, it'd be cheaper but more time?
It would be cheaper on, the, the estimate that we got last year was for a hundred and six thousand dollars roughly from the LA County. But where it costs more time is that, um, right now, we can go into the facility at SPCA at any time without even having to contact their staff. They give us keys, we have key codes, we have cage, uh, animal, access to the animal cages, so, and also access to the freezer when we're disposing, uh, disposing of dead animals. Um, the process is very simple. All we have to do is fill out a half sheet of paper, drop it in the inbox, and then the animals cared for by their staff when they get to it. If we were to use the county, the process by which animals are collected and kept, the officer has to be with their officer to do the entire process. So their processing might take an hour just when you get your turn. If you have to go, if there's other agencies ahead of you, you have to wait, you have to pick a number and wait until it's your turn to process the animal. Additionally, the nearest, uh, LA County office is Gardena, but that one closes at six. So when that one's closed, if we do after-hours calls, our officers will have to go to the next nearest available twenty-four hour facility versus where we can go now. We can just go in without having to call staff at SPCA. So if we had to process animals after hours and the instances in which we process animals after hours are anything law enforcement related, if someone is arrested, what, they have an animal in the car, we would be called in. If there's an animal attack, we would have, uh, our officers come in. Or if there's a, um, person versus animal, uh, bite, we would come in. Or a sick animal, we also do it for that. Um, but again, if we were to go with the county, um, we would have to, the, the, the discount that we get would quickly be lost in the amount of staff time and, and time away from the city. Also, we'd also have, uh, it'd be more difficult for our residents because not only do we go about once a day to SPCA, but our residents can go for classes, they can go there for adoptions, and they can go there to, to retrieve their lost animals. So if we were to go to the county, they would have to wait just as long as our officers would have to wait to get their animals back or to adopt that animals.
Okay, one more question. Your original budget was ninety-six hundred. When did you find out it was more than that?
Well, we knew it was gonna go up, but like you said, they, they, we didn't do a contract with them for ninety-six hundred, ninety-six, it was just a placeholder. So that's how, what we used to, to determine the ninety, the ninety-eight hundred. Plus, we were only doing it for two months. They gave us, uh, we only did it for ten months at that cost, so that's why it was less. Um, this year, uh, it's a full twelve months.
Okay. Yeah, that's all. Thanks, Harvey.
Any other questions? This report? Yes, ma'am.
With the SPCA, the, do our residents know that we have access to their sites? Cause there was a dog that was very ill. Um, he passed away and they tried to take it to the one here in Longdale and it's closed. Then they went to Hawthorne and they wouldn't take it.
Right. I, I, I should apologize. Our staff has access, not, not the public. The public can't go in at all hours. They have to just go during the open hours. But currently, SPCA closes at four. We're on till six, seven days a week. So even though they're closed, we can still go in the facility, drop off an animal, either dead or a live animal, and we're out very quickly.
So they should have called us to pick up?
Correct.
The animal.
And if the dog is ready, sure, we'd pick that up for free. And also, um, yeah, we have seven days a week coverage for animal care. So, um, we wouldn't come in if it was just a dead animal though after hours, because then that gets more expensive for, for staff, because we have to pay overtime.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on this item? Okay. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item? Item six?
I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
Okay, the motion made by Mr. Kearney, that we go with staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Seconded by? Ms. Williams. Yeah. Yeah. I kinda combined it. See how you did it? All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? You didn't like that, huh? Okay, would the council please vote? I was trying to think of what's the equivalent of mister? Cause I call him mister.
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item seven, concerning the Longdale Beet Fixed Route Transportation. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Nice to see everyone tonight. Uh, the Longdale Beet Fixed Route Transportation System, which we'll refer to as LBTS, just to shorten that up, has been an active public transportation option for Longdale residents and those from the surrounding communities for several decades. LBTS is a two-route, uh, bus system with an express route and a residential route. Uh, the LBTS was suspended on May sixth, two thousand twenty due to the national health crisis, county-state, uh, health restrictions, and sharply declining ridership numbers. LBTS returned to service on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, so we've been, uh, behind the wheel here for about four and a half months. We have statistics for the first, uh, four months. Uh, LBTS was at its peak in terms of ridership in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, in which a total of eighty-nine thousand, fifty-six passengers were transported. In FY fourteen, fifteen through FY nineteen, twenty, LTB, LBTS transported, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five passengers, or an average of sixty-two thousand per fiscal year. Ridership began to decline significantly in FY eighteen, nineteen, from, uh, sixty-three thousand down to forty-three thousand, or a decline of approximately thirty-one percent. And in FY nineteen, FY nineteen, twenty, uh, from, from eighteen, nineteen to nineteen, twenty, uh, ridership declined another thirty-three percent. It's really hard to explain why that happened. Since LBTS's return in March, uh, in May, two thousand twenty-three, the rider, ridership has been slow to build for the four-month period. May fifteen, two thousand twenty-three through September fifteen, two thousand twenty-three, LBTS has averaged eight hundred and seventy-eight passengers per thirty-day period for a grand total of thirty-five hundred and eleven passengers. And taking a quick, uh, look at page two, the ridership table, you'll see that we have four three-months period and two, uh, two-week periods equalling forty, uh, equalling, uh, four complete months, uh, for this report. Uh, you can see that in the fir-, the second half of May, the first two weeks of the system, we transported three hundred and seventy-one. In June, numbers were at nine-thirty, July, eight-seventy-two, August, eight-seventy-six, first half of September, four hundred and sixty-two. That gives you thirty-five hundred and eleven total. Uh, you can see, uh, in the, in the revenue report that we were offering, uh, free fares from May fifteenth through June thirtieth, so there's no revenue there. And you can see the revenue reports, uh, kinda goes with the ridership, although August seems like an anom- uh, uh, anomaly because we had, uh, fairly low ridership but more paid customers. You know, the, uh, the system is free to seniors, disabled, and children under six with a, with a paying, uh, adult. Uh, the numbers are pretty equal in terms of ridership. You'll see that the residential route, route has outpaced the express route by forty-five, uh, individuals in that four-month period. So not much of a difference there, a nominal increase, but, uh, residential is carrying more passengers than the express. Uh, it, it, it's hard to explain the low ridership right now. I will say, in terms of transportation, you'll see lower numbers everywhere, uh, for public transportation in the summer months because people are out of their habits, families are traveling and whatnot. But you'll see that the ridership numbers are low for Ju- July and August. Uh, LBTS reached an average of thirty-one passengers per day in May and a low of twenty-five passengers, uh, actually, I'm sorry, twenty-three passengers, uh, per day for June. So the numbers are very, very lukewarm. Uh, with the recent price, uh, recent spikes in gas prices, this is odd as well, uh, the ridership typically goes with gas prices. When gas prices are high, uh, more people ride because they're keeping their cars at home. When gas prices go low, typically more people use their vehicles and riderships go down as well. So, uh, we did see, we did, I just got fresh reports for September, and the September ridership numbers are nine hundred and ten. So, uh, that was our second nine hundred-plus, uh, thirty-day period since June. So that's, that's, uh, that's encouraging there. Uh, in order to increase participation, we're just gonna present a, a number of ideas here. It could be a case where there's a lot of people in Longdale that just still don't know that the, uh, the system is back on the streets. That could be one case. It could be just, uh, you know, the transportation decline in, in the summer months, because we are seeing it pick up as of, uh, September. People go back to work, kids go back to school. Uh, a- again, summer months are typically low for public transportation. Uh, there are a number of ways that the city can promote and market LBTS service in addition to routine, routine social media posts, which we've done, and using the city website, which we've done. Uh, four specific ideas here is, one, street banners on Hawthorne Boulevard are always effective. Uh, I think that's probably a great, uh, method of trying to get the word out. When we put up those banners for special events, the calls start coming in, the emails start coming, so that's a very effective way. Cost of that would be approximately twelve hundred dollars. Fence banners at city parks is another option, like we do for special events. That would carry a cost of about, uh, three hundred dollars to advertise at the city parks. I don't know if that's an appropriate thing to advertise at city parks, that it is an option, if the council wants to do that. Uh, resident and business mailer at a cost of about four hundred and, forty-two hundred and fifty dollars is an effective way. I don't know if it's the most effective way. That's a lot of money for a resident mailer, but we do have approximately ten thousand, eight hundred residents to mail to. And, uh, also another low-cost effective method, I think, could be a piece on Longdale City TV. The only cost there would be for staff time and staff labors. Those seem to be very, uh, very good ways to deliver messages to the public. In addition, we have our new transportation contractor, Transportation Concept, that was, uh, uh, selected off the RFP process back in, in, uh, April. And we're gonna tap into them too and see if they have any ideas on how we can increase ridership. They're the experts there, and they've been in the transportation field for a while. I think that can help as well. And all these costs that have been discussed, we've already contacted, uh, LA County Metro and cleared this, is these are all, uh, Proposition A eligible expenses. Uh, any type of advertising for a Prop A funded project, which the Longdale Beet is. So again, Prop A would be able to carry any of those expenses if we decide to do anything like that. Uh, fiscal impact, there's no fiscal impact to the city's two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget. If, uh, if a marketing plan and promotions plan is put into place for the approximate costs identified in the section above and the subheading ideas to ridership, uh, those are four things, again, we could do in combination or one at a time. Uh, staff recommends that the city council, number one, receives and files this report or provides further direction. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for that report. Councilwoman Suarez?
I've got a quick question. Can you remind me what the, the regular fare is?
The budget for this?
Or the fare to ride?
The fare is, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's seventy-five cents.
Oh, still seventy-five cents?
For generally adults and children over six. Again, it's free for, uh, handicapped seniors and children under six with a paying adult.
And then for those that have the tab card, they can use?
Yes.
I have a question. Um, do you go down to El Camino, um, College?
We don't. We don't. We go, the farthest we go that way would be, uh, I believe Prairie, in the area of Prairie and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, but that's just the way the system was set up at one time.
I wonder if we went to El Camino College, we'd pick up more riders. I know there's a, a lot of young people.
Yeah?
There.
That's a good one.
Trying to figure out how they can get to El Camino.
Just another thing we've done is we've, we've done this historically here at Longdale, is we've always offered to schools and students with showing, uh, an ID to grab a free ride. So we made that announcement to Sentinel Valley, uh, Longdale Elementary School District, the high schools, as well as El Camino College. We have a nice partnership with them. So, uh, no, we don't go there, but if they come to us, we'll let them ride for free as if they show their, uh, school ID, but that's an interesting thought.
But if their destination is El Camino, El Camino College, then, I mean, well, you're gonna ride for free. You can't ride for free to, um, El Camino. You can ride around town. Right, right. But if they can get to El Camino, I think whether it's free or not, I think that would, you might, I, I mean, I don't know what the numbers would bear, bear out, you know, but I've heard from time to time, um, students, and when I say students, not necessarily, you know, uh, young students, just students, period.
Yeah.
That's taking a class at El Camino and would, it would be convenient if they was able to ride the, um, you know.
When this system was designed, I, I think way back, you know, it used to be the trolley. I, I, from what I hear, I don't know when this started, maybe the late seventies or the early eighties, but, uh, when it was designed, I think whoever designed this intended to try to keep it as close to the city as possible, for whatever reason. But that's an interesting thought. Uh, they probably should be going there.
Is there an additional fee if they go to El Camino?
No. They just don't go there.
Well, you can't even, can't even get there.
Well, no, but if we were to go.
Oh, yeah.
You know? Do we have to pay the metro for crossing the street or, or crossing the city line?
Uh, our system just wouldn't go there, cause it's fixed route. And once we get off the route and start to go other places, then there's liabilities involved in that. But, uh, I mean, if we were to look to redesign this route, that would be, uh, I think that would be a wise decision to take our buses closer to El Camino College or two.
Yeah.
Something to look into. I'm, I'm just wondering.
Two questions for Mike. Do you think ridership's down because pre-COVID, people find other ways to get to where they had to go? And they're still using that? And then you brought up the gas prices. Well, I don't know about the rest of you, but I haven't seen gas prices go down at all. So you, you said about the gas prices. I, I don't know if they're gonna come back, cause I think they really found alternative ways to get shopping, doctors, family members, and the gas prices are never gonna come down. So we, can we wait and see about this, right? Wait and see? Yeah, okay.
I, I think, I think you're right about the ridership, uh, and related to COVID, that everything seems to be slow to rebuild.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to explain the low ridership when gas has been over five dollars.
Yeah.
Just about the entire time since it came back.
Okay.
I, I would like to see if we could do a banner and then do the city promotion on city TV. And we're less expen-, we're, we're not as expensive as metro, so seventy-five cents, we should be advertising, you know, ride our Longdale Beet for seventy-five cents, and it'll take you whichever destination you want.
And we're on Google Maps as well. So when somebody, uh, opens up Google Maps, you know, you have the transportation link, you're gonna get Longdale Beet as a way to get to wherever you wanna go, although it may take additional transfers. Yeah, so we're on Google Maps as well, and that helps.
I think if we advertise on Hawthorne Boulevard, uh, with a banner and then do, uh, the city TV, maybe we'll get a little bit more ridership. But we need to put out there that it's, uh, seventy-five cents to ride if you're not a senior or a student. I didn't know seniors rode free. If not, I would, I told my mom, take the little city bus instead of having someone drive for.
But I'd still like to see these winter months and see how the numbers come up first before we spend money on a banner or... I know social media, yeah, I understand that. But Mike says usually in the winter months, membership goes up. Let's wait and see if it does go up. I mean, we still put seventy cents on the social medias and all that, but I don't wanna see spending whatever it was for, um, banners if it's not, the numbers aren't gonna, aren't gonna be there. Cause I know, like Mike said, during the winter months, our ridership on the, the Beet goes up. It's, it's been that way since it started. Mike had been, I, so let's wait and see what the numbers are in the winter months before we start spending money. we start spending money. I know it's not budget money, it's not general fund money, it's Prop A, but let's just wait and see if the numbers go up first.
We need to do something to advertise.
I was gonna say.
Because people don't know that we have this. Or they do see the bus, but they have no idea that it's seventy-five cents or if it's free. Um, I think if you survey our, our residents, they don't know that if they're seniors, they get a free bus ride.
Yeah.
They just see the bus driving around.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree that we do, uh, need to do some, some type of promotions because if you wait to the, to winter months just to see um, how that fares out, it, no matter what the outcome is, it still would raise the question, would we have, would we could have increased the ridership had we invested a little in, in advertising? No matter what the numbers were. Even if the numbers in, in, increased, the question still could be, would we have a greater ridership had we um, put a little bit in promotions? If the numbers stayed the same, same question, right? Um, if the numbers dipped, same question. But of course, if we spend the money on it, then we could determine, wait a minute, we did some advertising, we did some promotion, and we didn't get a, um, return on our investment, maybe we've capped out of riderships. And no matter how many times they see the promotions, no matter how many um, times they know that, you know, if you're a senior, you can ride for free, those who're gonna ride, is gonna ride. And those who are not gonna ride, is not gonna ride no matter how many times they see it because they've actually seen it. Um, there's many, many times where, you've seen it where y- y- you know something exists that you can take advantage of, but you kind of forget about it until somebody bring it to your attention, whether it's the, the free rides for the seniors. I kind of knew about that, but if you would've asked me yesterday, can seniors ride for free, I probably would've said, you know what, let me, let me think about that. Although at one time I did know that seniors can ride for free. Um, so we don't, I don't wanna be in that, that position. Um, and I think that's what this Proposition A funds is for, make sure that we use those funds to increase our ridership in our transportation, you know, um, system.
The other thing I would mention is uh, you know, we're probably a couple of weeks away from the mobile validators from being installed. We're working to get on Cubic Schedule. That's the Metro Contractor. Uh, Metro's given us the mobile validators for free. We did, reviewed that in the staff report. But I think once we get those in, and we'll be accepting tap cards, that our ridership will probably go up as well because a lot of people know that, hey, they're not taking tap cards right now. So that, we'll probably see, that'll probably result in a ridership increase as well.
And I don't see any reason why not to um, do banners at city park.
Yeah, that was just to kind of throw it out there. It might not be the, the best uh, might not be what the families and the kids wanna see when they're going to the park.
What a, I'm not talking about an intrusive banner, you know?
Yeah.
But I, I don't know.
I agree with you on the, the big banners over Hawthorne would be better than city park banners.
Absolutely.
Yeah, city parks.
Yep.
How do we, how did we advertise for students? Like, the kids are going to Longdale High or uh, Jane Adams or Rogers. How did we advertise with the school district?
We sent uh, information to Longdale Elementary School District and they just, they put it in their newsletters, uh, that all the parents apparently see. The, they don't take hard copy flyers anymore. They have a new system. And we gave the information to Sentinel Valley as well, and Environmental Charter High School, and El Camino College as well. So they'll put that in their newsletters and figure out their own way to advertise that. Uh, it could result in a increase in ridership, not in revenue, but ridership. And that's what we want, ridership, right?
Correct.
Yeah. We want people to use the system as opposed to revenue because it's just going right back to Prop A anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with the advertisement, especially since we have limited um, uses for which we can use those Prop A funds.
Yeah, me too.
So this is a re, receiving files, so can we make a motion to do the Hawthorne banners?
Hawthorne banners.
And the city TV?
And the, oh yeah, and the social media.
City TV is fine.
So one, two, and four.
And social media.
Did you want the fence banners?
I mean, I don't see what.
Or start off with the Boulevard?
We can start off with those. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with starting off with those three. So we got the street banners on Hawthorne Boulevard. We have the social, social media and city website. And the third one, I'm, I'm missing the third one here?
Uh, city TV?
City TV, yeah.
Cable piece.
Or city TV. Okay.
You know, and on the banner, we could, we could make it very clear, you know, it's free for these people, it's seventy-five cents. We take tap cards, you know, we can uh, get lots of information on those street banners.
Okay. Let me, is, is, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We can do that with, okay, we can do that um, on anonymous consent.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your report. You wanna do a vote?
I made a motion.
You wanna do a vote? Okay, let's hear, let's have a motion.
I made a motion.
Since we're spending money, prop funds, there it is. Since it's prop funds, let's do it. So motion made by Kearney, seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Your counsel please vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for their report. Okay. Next item is item eight, Public Works' Part-Time Office Assistant Amendment.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, this is a quick item. So during the budget process, you know, the part-time office assistant for Public Works Department was basically dropped. Uh, there is some confusion. You know, we had a part-time Public Works Director at that time, and then the part-time person was actually hired as a full-time ad, admin assistant, so therefore somewhere in the shuffle, this person, this position was dropped. Uh, this item is to bring that position back and as Public Works does need this part-time office assistant, and uh, this will need a budget amendment of eighteen thousand one ninety-nine to bring this uh, position back and fund, have it funded for the remainder of this fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, so staff recommends that council uh, fund the part-time office assistant position and approve the budget amendment for eighteen thousand one ninety-nine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report. Any questions on the report?
I, I do. What does, what are the duty of the part-time assistant?
The part-time assistant, when they were there historically, would answer the phones, um, take care of the counter requests. When people would come to the counter, they would handle the work orders as they came in, distribute them to the proper person. So a lot of it is handling phone calls that kind of are destructive during um, the other two positions that are there, working on their usual um, tasks. So it, it's like more of a receptionist type of thing to help um, distribute work as it comes in.
And what are the hours that they'll be working?
They would be working from nine to two.
So that means if this resident calls for the yellow line, it's not gonna be six, seven months before someone gets back to him?
It could be two.
It could be two months, right?
Well, once I find out why that happened, it won't happen again.
Okay, thank you.
My question is somewhat like hers. We have two individuals that are there full-time right now, right?
Yes.
How many phone calls are we getting that we need to hire a, a part-time individual?
It varies every day, but um, when they do come in, aside from the work orders that they get online, people that come into the counter, phone calls that they get, it's um, each time it comes in, they have to stop what they're doing and, and pick it up or go to the counter. So it's just a relief to help to get some of that out of the way so that they can complete some of their tasks. Um, some things that are being overlooked are record retention and filing that we haven't been able to get to. And it's important to try to get some of that, those documents out of the way so we can either get them destroyed as we're trying to do or organized for the next um.
But those sound like temporary things. That's, that.
Ma, mayor, council, we've had this position for years. It's been budgeted, it was inadvertently taken off. It's a key position, it's a part-time one, but it helped augment um, the staff duties. And just a reminder that we've turned, we, we brought in the um, trash. Now the trash is done internally. We uh, no longer contract with HFNH, I think that's the name of the firm. And um, staff has now is taking on that extra duties, working with Republic. So there's additional duties. Um, so there's additional uh, need for this part-timer. That's always been there. Uh, we just had a staff member went to a adjacent city, moved out, and the part-timer uh, promoted to the full-time position. So it's.
Understood, understood.
So they're constantly gonna be doing something, not just uh, sitting at the desk and answering phone calls?
No, no, no. They'll, they'll be helping with permits, um, getting up to help at the counter, fu, um, issuing work orders, possibly assisting with encroachment permits. So there's gonna be something for them to do, even if it's filing or other things.
So if there's no question, I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Okay, motions to approve been made by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? The council please vote. How are we doing, Madam City Clerk?
We're way down one. We got it now. My button will work. For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is City Manager's Report.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'll be brief. So as the council is well aware, we hit, we're dealing with the issue of the grave sites. Staff and myself went out to the site and just with the adjacent resident and the, the current property owner that just left, he was not there, but um, we discovered the one grave marker as well as potential other sites. Um, so we forward information to Metro about that and they responded back with having staff back out there. And we met with Metro staff. They took pictures and took some information and then they were, they said they will get back to us accordingly on, on that matter. Um, due to all these issues going on, I did have to cancel my, my trip to uh, we did get mostly all refunds. So to uh, ICMA Austin, yay, I was happy I didn't have to go actually. But so, I'm glad I got to stay um, actually, but I get to do the online version of it. So that'll be fun. And one other thing we um, you know, staffs work in due diligently. They have been working with Public Works daily on the bulky items. So I just wanna let you know that, you know, as I mentioned, we are down some staff. So we're trying to, Leia's trying to get out there with other staff members and make sure we get some of those items. So if you see them, let us know and uh, we'll get out there. But again, they're down a little bit of staff and uh, we're trying to work through that. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Well, you guys already know personally, I attended the Metro meeting on the twentieth. I also attended by Zoom, um, the Legislative Committee meeting um, for Contract Cities uh, on the, uh, again, that was by Zoom. And I also attended a fun one, the Longdale High Homecoming game this last Friday night. And it was kind of a nice evening at the football game. Number one, they won. Number two, it was homecoming. And number three, Dr. Daniel Uridia was there and after the game, um, had me walk out on the track and on the field to experience the improvements that were made over there. Man, that, that is first class. Um, the track, easy to step on. I could only imagine if I ever thought that, of wanting to be a runner. That was a beautiful, beautiful, soft, nice. And then the, the field, now that it's all prepared, so easy. And Friday night was the first night that their um, electronic scoreboard worked. And so that was exciting to an awful lot of the crowd. So yay, Longdale Cardinals, we want homecoming.
Cardinal pride. There it is. You all good? Yes, sir?
Okay. Uh, I attended with Councilwoman, uh, Quavis Suarez, whatever your name is, uh, to the twenty, twenty-two-three CVHASD Industry Partnership Breakfast at Hawthorne High School. And I also attended with the mayor and I did the Longdale Cleanup Day on the twenty-third. Uh, personally, I thought the turnout was kind of poor because we only had twenty people out there. But Robert and I picked up a lot of trash, a lot, Hawthorne Boulevard. And I had to turn in at one location because the crap outside, the individual's business. With that, turn it over. Pass it on.
Um, I think Rhonda covered. I attended Metro. Pat covered that I attended the breakfast. And then I covered earlier that I covered, that I went to the COG meeting. Um, so with that, I'll pass it on.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, okay, I covered earlier that I went to the.
You're skipping me now?
Oh, cause she looked, she looked at me and said, take it away.
Because we're the same person.
Oh, yes, right, right, right. That's it for Madam Pro Tim Quavis.
I actually uh, was in Sacramento from the twentieth through the twenty-second. Attended the hundred-and-twenty-fifth year League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo. Um, I did my harassment training and ethics. Yay, I don't have to do it in October. Um, so for two years, I won't have to do that. Um, I also attended a seminar on the um, addressing the fentanyl crisis. Um, you know, even small cities, we're all having the same issues. So that's something that we need to work together with the school districts and teaching uh, parents, um, especially the Hispanic families, not to go across the border to purchase the medication and use an actual doctor or pharmacy in the US. Cause the majority of the uh, pills that are coming from out of the country have fentanyl. Um, I also attended the Latino Caucus Business Meeting, few uh, general sessions that talked about uh, the uh, police, uh, sheriffs and all uh, other items that cities think are, are having concerns on. Um, I just have a question for our city attorney regarding the new um, no-bond uh, law.
Yes.
As a city, are we able to help the sheriff department by passing a, some type of law that says, it doesn't matter if you're a shop li, uh, lifter, uh, we have to, we're gonna take you in or something that will amend LA County's law?
Sure. So our, our laws would only be applicable to enforcing the city's codes and we would have to be the charging entity. And even then, the Superior Court may tell us, we're not going that direction right now. So um, to the extent that the no-bail um, policy is frustrating us, uh, we're certainly keeping a close eye on the City of Whittier's lawsuit um, to try to enjoin that.
And since where you brought that up, are we able to join the other cities that are currently on that lawsuit or is it too late to do that?
I, I believe we could. I would like to brief the council on that at a separate time.
Thank you.
Good. All right, thank you. Okay, so, once again, I did attend the, the Metro uh, meeting last week. Also attended the um, sanitation district um, regular meeting as well. I attended a meeting with um, Supervisor Holly Mitchell and a group of elected officials where we talked about just different issues. Um, got an update on what's happening with the um, Holly Mitchells, our supervisors in office. I did bring to her attention the needs for more deputies here in um, um, Longdale. And she made me aware that the Board of Supervisors just recently authorized um, two additional academies, um, with the hope, of course, um, putting more deputies in the pool for which we'll be able to um, to contract for more deputies. The challenging part, of course, is across the, the state and pretty much across the, the country, there's not, um, there's a, a, a lack of um, folks um, wanting to be um, police officers, a law enforcement officer. So it's a little more challenging than, than usual. It used to be where you had these academies and you um, you didn't have enough um, academies um, to accommodate um, those wishing to be law enforcement um, um, officers. So that's the challenge. So um, so they did authorize two academies. Um, so how quickly they'll be able to fill those academies is yet to, to be um, um, seen. Um, she did ask that um, if we can do, uh, whatever we can do to, to get the word out, whether it's putting on our website or what have you, um, that this opportunity is available. Um, I think when, when you see the, it, that obviously it's a good career and the money's not too bad either. The compensation's not too bad either. You know, and sometimes people are not aware that the compensation, when they see the compensation, they kind of might think about it a little, little differently, right? Um, so if we can um, assist in um, promoting it, Mr. City Manager on our websites or what have you, um, that might um, help us out and to, to get on people into the, the academies. I also mentioned to her about the um, the utilities box, um, um, I'm not gonna call it a project, but the utility box um, issue. And I made mention to her that that was something that we took a look at um, before, but uh, for some reason, I think we ran into funding sources or what have you. And so she suggested we may compare with um, the County Arts Commission. And her staff's gonna give us some more information. So there might be some, some opportunities um, there with the um, Arts Commission if we, if there's a desire to move that um, project. The last thing um, I attended, of course, was um, the Cleanup Day. Um, there was a time where we had more people that volunteered for Cleanup Day. Um, we had uh, in particular, um, Environmental Charter used to come out, the, the Boy Scouts, was the Girl Scouts too? Girl Scouts used to come out. Um, and I like to think the only thing that has changed is the, is the hot dogs. Because you just, you used to get hot dogs and a soda, you know, afterwards. to get hot dogs and a soda, you know, afterwards. I, you know, I hope that's not the case because you no longer get hot dog and a soda. That's the only thing I can think of that has changed, because we still have all three of those entities, right? And so if we can, you know, work with the Britification Committee and reach out to those entities, maybe there's another business that want to partner with us and maybe they don't have hot dogs, maybe they have chicken nuggets. I don't know who that would be, right? Right? Or something. Tacos or what have you. Sandwiches? I'm just saying. The ice cream? You know, what have you? Because it's usually, although it wasn't warm this year, but usually it's pretty warm. And I was surprised, this year was not warm at all, but usually it's pretty warm on Cleanup Day. So if we can reach out to them, maybe that'll help incentivize folks to come out. And of course, the students, we can always give them, if they need community service hours, you know, a lot of, especially the high schools, are requiring community service, you know, and so if we give them community service hours or documentation or what have you, that in and of itself should drive at least some of the students if they don't generally want to pick up trash, right? Right? The fact that they're getting community service hours may bring them out, you know, or what have you. Or if it's not the school in general, perhaps the school would have an environmental-related club or something, you know, that will fall under their wheelhouse and would be willing to have their students participate. Just something to think about for the next time we have one. One issue I want to bring up, Mr. City Manager, which I got under the looming issues category on my note pad, and that's these e-bikes. We've seen the e-bikes, you know, where, everybody know what the e-bikes are, just in case you don't know, it's basically, it's a low-powered motorcycle. For all intents and purposes, they, you know, people get trapped with the word bike, attracted with the word bike, but for all intents and purposes, if you wouldn't let your child ride a motorcycle in traffic, why would you allow your child to ride an e-bike in traffic, competing with cars, trucks, and all that kind of stuff? And e-bikes can go, some of these e-bikes can go 30 miles an hour. You know, imagine getting in a collision, going 30 miles an hour with a car that's going 45 miles an hour, because that's the, you know, the speed limit or what have you, 40 miles an hour, right? And we're talking about elementary kids riding these e-bikes or what have you. I know some cities are starting to take a look at some regulations on these e-bikes. I would like for us to get ahead of the issue. It's kind of like when we had those little Rocket Pockets, remember those little scooters? And it was all the rage, you know, and people was getting hurt on those because you could barely see them, you know, in your car as they zoom in front of you, you know, in traffic and stuff like that. And also with the, what's the other one? The scooters. You know, the scooters, that kind of felt off a little bit because of COVID, it was all the big rage. I'm sure that's going to pick up, you know, now that we're no longer in the pandemic, so to speak, but definitely these e-bikes are really, you know, as they getting, the prices are coming down and they're becoming cheaper. Right now, for some people, it may be a little cost prohibitive, but they have e-bikes that's 300 bucks, you know, now, you know, or 400 bucks or what have you, that can go, like I say, 30 miles an hour. So if we can take a look at that, so we can just kind of, just have it on our radar.
Thank you, Mayor Council. We do have a current ordinance and we'll check into it, but it does include the e-bikes and scooters, but we'll bring something back for consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I think we're done. Okay, sounds like we got a closed session. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a closed session with a conference with legal counsel under anticipated litigation. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the provision of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, which deals with significant exposure to litigation. For purposes of 54956.9E, the issue is facts that are currently unknown to the potential plaintiff and therefore do not have to be reported at this time. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to close session.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council was briefed on the one item of anticipated litigation in closed session tonight. The council by consensus gave staff direction on a number of items pursuant to the Brown Act. That direction is not reportable at this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that report, Mr. City Attorney. I want to adjourn this meeting tonight in the memory of our late Senator Dianne Feinstein, who recently passed away on September the 29th. Dianne Feinstein served as a United States Senator from California from 1992 until her death in 2023. She was a member of the Democratic Party and she served as mayor of San Francisco from 1978 to 1988. By the time of her death, Feinstein was the oldest sitting United States Senator and a member of Congress. She also was the longest-serving United States Senator from California. And she recently passed away on September 29th, 2023. Our condolences go out to her families. We surely will miss her representation and advocacy for the folks here in the state of California in the United States Senate. With that, we adjourn in the memory of the United States Senator from California, Dianne Feinstein. And with that, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Long Island City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, October 16th, Long Island City Council chambers. It is now 9:35 and we are adjourned. Thank you for that report, Mr. City Attorney. I want to adjourn this meeting tonight in the memory of our late Senator Dianne Feinstein, who recently passed away on September the 29th. Dianne Feinstein served as a United States Senator from California from 1992 until her death in 2023. She was a member of the Democratic Party and she served as mayor of San Francisco from 1978 to 1988. By the time of her death, Feinstein was the oldest sitting United States Senator and a member of Congress. She also was the longest-serving United States Senator from California. And she recently passed away on September 29th, 2023. Our condolences go out to her families. We surely will miss her representation and advocacy for the folks here in the state of California in the United States Senate. With that, we adjourn in the memory of the United States Senator from California, Dianne Feinstein. And with that, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Long Island City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, October 16th, in Long Island City Council chambers. It is now 9:35 and we are adjourned.